This conference will now be recorded.
All right, super, we're ready to go. Then Brian, thank you for your patience.
Sure.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Here.
Tino?
Here.
Lauren?
Here.
Portega?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Here.
Black?
Here. Thank you. Thank you very much for being with us today. We have a meeting and a training for open meeting laws. There's been a number of questions that the council has had and interpretation from our attorney and stuff. So Brian, we appreciate you spending some time with us to maybe clarify some, some questions and we'll go from there. So with that, I think we'll just turn the time over to Brian to go ahead and jump right into the training.
Yeah, and so I want you to know that my understanding is that this, this meeting is against the backdrop of both the summary of questions that I responded to in a discussion with Council Member Stevens. And then I also have been made aware, or Jared, or Jared has shared with me some analysis that he did for you all about, it looks like a citizens group page that has invited you all to some things. And he's offered advice with regard to that. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Also, John Birch.
Also, I think three of us have continued to be interested in being able to have constituent meetings with citizens with less than a quorum. And when you and I talked, you know, you clarified that that, that does indeed not break the open meeting laws, providing we're not deliberating or talking about an item that's currently before the council or taking advice on any quasi judicial matter.
Yeah. And so that's actually a good segue. And I think the, the first thing I want to let you know is that in the realm of open meetings law, and probably actually most of the law, at times, it's really hard to give like hard yes or no answers. And part of the reason why people hate attorneys is because our answers are almost always hedged as it depends. And so you can take a scenario and you can present me with a series of facts and I could say, yes, you probably can do that. But if you just tweak one of those little facts a little bit, that completely changes the answer. And so you may be relying on, on me saying that was okay. But in reality, something small has changed, which doesn't make it okay. And so if it's okay with you all, I'd like to start out by talking about your city attorney's advice that he provided to you regarding that page group, if I can refer to them as the page group. And in going through that letter, he's actually done an excellent job of analysis of that situation and actually gives you really, not just really good advice, but really good options for how you can stay in compliance with the open meeting law. And I've always liked to think about the open meeting law as a little bit of both the letter of the law, like here are the requirements that you have to comply with. But there's also a spirit to that law as well that carries with it a requirement for you to kind of preserve confidence in, in government, if that makes sense. Meaning there's a perceptive element that you always want to be aware of with regard to the open meeting law. And so I think as a backdrop, I want you to know that I have 100% confidence based on the analysis that I've read from your city attorney in the advice that your city attorney is offering you. And so I don't know if there's a way for me to say, you got a good city attorney, you should listen to him. But that's really, I want to make sure that that message is heard and received by you all, based on my analysis of the work that he's doing for you. So then, as we turn to, you know, this and Council Member Stevens, it's all right, I want to start with, with your inquiry about a group of council members meeting with a constituent group. And I want to start by saying, there, there probably are scenarios where that's perfectly acceptable. The risk points that you have within that scenario, though, are if you're receiving information from constituents and interacting with constituents, that may be okay. The dilemma comes when you as council members start engaging in crosstalk. And that creates that basis for deliberations. The other issue you want to be aware of is the perceptive issue that could be involved. Meaning if you're meeting with a specific constituent group over and over and over again, there may be a perception that you're just doing whatever that constituent group is, and they have higher and better access to the city council than maybe other competitive constituent groups or other, other small portions of the population. Or and, and it's one of those things that yes, we want to comply with the open meeting law, and we can do so in a way. But we also want to preserve confidence in government and the decisions that you're making, right? You don't want to create a forum where folks can undermine your decision-making authority by saying, this group or that group has outsized influence over the council, if that makes sense.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so in this case, I was referring particularly to open call town halls. So not with a specific group, but it's like, you know, three council members. So there's no quorum are going to be, I think the example I used, you know, sitting in the park on Saturday morning at nine o'clock, you're welcome to show up. You know, so there would be no control of the audience to whom we're speaking or to whom we're listening. It would be an open public call.
Sure. And I think that there's a way for that to occur. I mean, and I'll be honest with you, you're all in elected positions. And so you all have to answer to constituencies and constituent groups and constituent services is one of the more important facets of your job. And I 100% recognize that. And I think that, you know, if there's a small group of you that engages in like town hall activity, that's perfectly acceptable. You want to be careful of two scenarios. Scenario number one is again, that you're not creating some perception that you're more accessible or available to one or another person or group of persons or something like that. And then the other element that you have to always be aware of, and this is on any conversation, right? This could be Council Member Stevens going to lunch with Council Member Bray. If you two go to lunch and talk about something and then come back from lunch, and one of you goes and talks to Council Member Cheatham, and one of you goes and talks to Council Member Adamson, now all of a sudden you've triggered a quorum. And so one of the things that I always like to remind folks of is, yep, you absolutely can get in those scenarios. The question mark is to make sure you, you have the discipline so that you don't inadvertently trigger a quorum. And one of the risk factors that you get in, particularly when you get into groups that are just under a quorum, is you're always forever in a situation where just one conversation with one other council member triggers that quorum. And so sometimes, and I'll be honest, as, as an attorney, I sometimes advise more conservatively than my client wants me to. And I take that as a hazard of the job. But it's because we're looking to protect all of you individually, but also the city as a collective from those scenarios. And so when you have three folks together, the advice may sound a little more conservative than if it's two of you or just one of you. And it's because of the, the risk factor elevates at that point of the possibility that that quorum could be triggered by just that one extra inadvertent conversation, or it could even be an email, for example.
Thank you.
Sure. Other questions?
So, so Brian, I have a list of seven questions that Councilwoman Stevens had, had asked you. I mean, we could go down that list if you'd like, but I, I would prefer not to focus just on a list, but kind of a training on open meeting laws, importance of them, the perception of the, of those. But I'm more than happy to, to read the, the questions to you. She's got your answer next to them. But I think there's a little bit more to your answer on most of these.
Yes.
As you just said, your, as an attorney, your answer is more than a yes or a no answer all the time. And so she's got yes on a number of these. So.
Yeah, and go ahead.
I mean, I, it's up to you if you would like to do that and just answer these directly, or if you would, I'm comfortable with just making sure we go through the open meeting law. That's really the intent here is, we want to make sure we're doing the open meeting law correctly. I'm more of a person that doesn't like to walk in gray line. I like to stay away from the line if we can, but.
Sure, sure. And I think that, I mean, to me, one of the things to always keep in mind with the open meeting law is it is, and I'll give you two kind of introductory points on the open meeting law. Number one, it's imperfect, meaning there are always situations that you look at and you say, well, I'm not sure what the answer is here. And so you do have to kind of take a, take a stab at it. It's also a law that's not designed for litigation. It's a law designed for compliance. And so when we advise folks, we always advise them, do everything in your power to comply with the law. Meaning you don't approach the law from the premise of, how do I get around it? And so to us, we always say the goal of the law is compliance. And so we recommend that folks conduct themselves kind of above and beyond what the law asks for. And part of it is because the whole goal of the law is transparency of government decision-making processes. As I like to tell folks, the open meeting law is your ticket to the show. And the show is government. We get to see government in action through the open meeting law. For you all, it's important to remember that the open meeting law only guarantees the public the right to observe you in action. The open meeting law doesn't carry with it a right to testify in front of you. Now, if on your agenda, you have a portion that's like, we have an open forum, or maybe you're sitting on an issue and you're like, hey, we want to hear from, you know, the folks that are pro and con. Yes, you absolutely can do that. But it doesn't, the open meeting law does not require that to occur. Now, there are other statutes when you're sitting maybe in a quasi judicial capacity in your public hearing function that may require that. But it's not under the open meeting law. One of the questions that we get all the time is, I went to this city council meeting and they didn't let me talk. And our answer is, they don't have to let you talk. And so I always like to, to remind folks of that. Now, if you do have an open forum, there are a couple of things to always keep in mind. Number one, you're allowed to set time limits. And so if you want to say, we'll allow an open forum, but everybody gets three minutes, there's no problem with that. The other thing that you have to be careful of is if you do have an open forum, you kind of have to let whoever comes and whatever they want to talk about in that open forum. And so sometimes I'll see local governments that'll say, we are only taking testimony on this issue or related to this issue. And that again, helps you control your agenda. And as the chair, it allows the mayor to say, hey, you know, we're only hearing about this issue. Maybe look for us on, on an upcoming agenda or something like that. The next big element within the open meeting law is there are two things that really fall under the open meeting law. The first is decisions. So anytime you take a vote on something, that has to be done in an open meeting law. The second is deliberation. So if you're on the road to a decision, meaning you can see that decision point on the horizon and you're deliberating towards it, that should be done in an open meeting as well. And so the thing that always remember is that deliberation expands the, the reach of the open meeting law. Because as you're going on that road to a decision, it gets you there. Questions that come up out of that are, so if, is it anytime we have a quorum of folks, we have to have an open meeting? And the answer is no. It's only if you have a quorum that's deliberating towards a decision or making a decision. So people ask all the time, can we go to lunch with one another? Can we go to a funeral? Whatever the case is, can we all be there? And the answer is yes, you can. The key is you can't talk shop when you're at those events together. You want to be very careful of that. So I always tell folks, it's not can you go to the event together? It's do you have the discipline to go to the event together and not get together and talk about what you're working on, or what's coming in front of the city, or whatever that is. And I think that the answer to that question is different for all of us. And I'll tell you that when I go to events, a lot of times I wind up hanging out with a fellow attorney or two, probably because we're the only two folks in the room that can stand one another. But we always go through our conversation and we're like, how are your kids doing? Have you gone anywhere on vacation? And there's always this kind of pause. And what do you think the very next thing is that we're going to start talking about after that pause?
What cases?
What cases were, exactly, what cases we're working on? The law, you know? And so that's the, that's the checkpoint for all of us under the open meeting law. What do we do when we hit that pause? And I think that that's the real question mark. So then, as you move from that area, the next big thing under the open meeting law is notice an agenda. And I noticed in your city attorney's analysis, right? He said, if you want to get together, we can put up a very simple agenda, that this is just an information item, and you can go through this. And it gives you that extra layer of protection to notice it up that way. And that's actually a very convenient way to kind of protect yourselves and the city from a possible open meeting law complaint. You do have to always remember that, that on an agenda, if you've got action items, they have to be identified as action items. And the agenda has to contain all probable items of discussion. Councilmember Stevens, it looks like you had a question?
Yeah. And now I was listening to you. And so it sort of went out of my head for a moment. Oh, golly gee. Oh, in the conversation that I had with Jared, where we talked about his perception on noticing, he also said, once it's noticed, then the mayor determines the agenda and the mayor runs the meeting. And, and that, I mean, that, that is not in the spirit of a, hey, we're going to be sitting in the park. You know, that's not neighborhood meetings with constituents in an informal setting. And so that's where, you know, that didn't, didn't fit the, the purpose.
Right. And I think that's a tricky spot too, right? And, and one of the things to always think about when you're trying to thread these needles is if you notice up a city council meeting, and there's only three or four of you there, are you creating a scenario where citizens can then say, well, wait a minute, where is the mayor? Where is Council Member Adamson? And do you really want to put your city and yourselves in that position? Because then you can almost see where, you know, I'm sure you're all getting along fine now, but there could be a political situation where all of a sudden, it's like a war of the meetings and attendance and stuff like that. And so you want to be, you know, and so I think that, and again, I think that that's one of those reasons for why you want to be cautious in those sorts of circumstances and figure out your best ways to approach those kind of town hall and constituent services situations. Yes, Councilmember Adamson?
Yeah. So what is your recommendation for the best way to handle that? Because I've always sort of believed that, for example, if Councilmember Bray and I were to say, we're going to have our own meeting, no one else is invited, Linda, Rick, Chris, Claudia, Mayor, sorry, you guys can't come. Only the two of us are going to come. But we're going to advertise this as a City of Pocatello Town Hall event. That would be problematic for the others who may wish to attend, but we're telling them they can't. So to avoid that situation, how should we best handle this?
So I think that if the council wants to hold a town hall, you absolutely can. And you can hold it, you know, as frequently and often as you want. And I mean, that's definitely one option. You can also have, you know, individual council, you know, a Councilmember Stevens or Councilmember Adamson Town Hall. You, you may want to be careful about calling it a City of Pocatello Town Hall if it's only one or two of you. But if you want to say, hey, we're getting together, we're going to have a town hall, we want to hear from you, you know, on the, we want to hear what you think of the new Panera or whatever, you're, you're more than welcome to do that. You really want to be careful in situations where you create a quorum, or in situations where folks are coming to talk about stuff that's on your pending agendas, that you can see either on an agenda or you know you're about to have a discussion on. And even there, it's not so much that you've got a problem with the citizens talking to you, it's how you talk back to them or across to your fellow council members, if that makes sense. And so sometimes I've seen folks, the way that they thread these sorts of things is they will say, we're going to have a town hall, and it's a 100% listening session, where you come in, you say what you want to say, but because we want to protect our decision-making capacity in the future, we're not going to give you responses. And the public actually reacts to that. Where you run into trouble is if the public comes into a meeting thinking they're going to have an interactive process, and then there's no interaction, right? They'll, they, they're savvy customers. They're savvy government customers. But if you say, look, we're trying to protect our ability to make a decision in the future, we just want to hear you out, they'll appreciate that, right? And again, they're coming in kind of eyes wide open and with plenty of notice. Does that answer your question?
Kind of, I guess. So what you're saying is, the whole council can call one a City of Pocatello Town Hall, in which case it has to be noticed and we all attend, or that we individually do. But I guess that my question is, what happens if it's two or three and it creates that perception, like you said, that why isn't the mayor here to the public? How does that concern?
Right. And I think that my answer on that is as your numbers get larger, you may want to think of it as more of a listening session, right? And that way you don't run into that open meeting, interaction deliberation issue, which is what I think you're trying to avoid anyway. It's like, how do we do this? Make sure our constituents are heard, but then not impair our ability to make a decision in the future. Does that make sense?
Councilmember Bray had a question.
Okay, two questions. First one, it seems to me if all you do is do a listening session, you're really taking it down to a level that's not very good for public interaction. Because you're, you're becoming a passive listener rather than an active listener by not engaging and talking and stuff like that. So that's an observation, I guess. Second, it seems like, we've had a lot of discussion about how we're fearful of the pandemic, so we wear masks. But it seems like we're more fearful of violating this public information, so to speak, or these public meeting laws, to where we don't really get to talk to the public. And one person does not draw like freedoms. And three different people often have three different subject areas that people will focus on. They have different people to follow. And I just think that there has, and I, you've said thread the needle, but it seems like we're always threading it to the side of caution, instead of doing what public meeting transparency does, to meet with the public with regularity and help them to understand why you are making some of the decisions you've made. And I don't think you're violating public meeting laws if you are discussing decisions that have been made versus ones that's coming up.
I, I would tend to agree with everything you've said, Council, Councilmember Bray. I mean, and I think that, you know, when, when folks come to our office for open meeting advice, you can understand why we're going to be on the conservative side of that coin, based on our responsibility and quite honestly, the Attorney General's responsibility to the citizens of Idaho. And I think that what I'm saying is, it's not that you can't do it, it's that you have to be careful when you do it. You have to be mindful of it. And I think that, you know, what you've proposed, particularly if you're just talking about decisions already made, you're probably okay. The, the caution point is, you know, when you have a town hall, sometimes it's very hard to forecast what everybody's going to talk about. And you just have to be really careful in that situation. And then if you do show up as three council members, you have to be super duper double, triple careful of having that one extra conversation, right? And especially if there's crosstalk and interaction between the three of you, if you draw in just that one extra person, that could create an issue. And so it's not that you can't do it, it's that you have to be very careful in how you go about it and the structure of it. And, and the other thing I would say is, you know, I've been in government long enough to learn that not everybody's a fan of government. And so you want to be able to protect yourself for what I would perceive to be the inevitable open meeting law complaint. And make sure that you've got your i's dotted and your t's crossed in that situation. And so I, I'm sorry if I'm coming across as, as more cautious than what you want to hear. But it's also, I'm, I'm coming to that from a pure place, meaning I'm just looking, I'm trying to protect you all as you go about your public business.
But I understand your role, but I also think that the public has a position at this table with us. And, and we have to give them some value in whatever we're doing. And to only protect this council without considering the value of the, the people whom we are working for is counterproductive.
I couldn't agree with you more, Councilmember Bray. When I give the full open meeting law presentation, one of the points that I emphasize repeatedly is the belief that government is a customer service business. And if we're not serving our customers in some capacity, we're not properly serving. And I mean, it is, government is service, and it's customer service. And if we don't serve them, we're out of a job.
Questions? Any other questions, counsel? Jared, do you have any?
Anything I can highlight for you all?
My only comment was obviously, I respect Brian and I agree with his opinions and his advice on matters. And unlike you said, I have, I have provided probably more conservative advice than what my client, the city and the council would want me to provide. And I just, I just have to remind everybody that my advice has not been, no, it can't happen. My advice has been, this is how it can happen in the most safe and open and transparent way. And as we talk about these different options, I still go back to the most safe, open and transparent way is to properly notice it as a city council meeting with a full form and have the meeting the way we have other meetings. Doesn't have to be here, it doesn't have to be at the tables, it can be in the park, it can be in different places. But if it's one, more than one council member, we might as well just make it a full council meeting. And that, that's been my conservative opinion throughout and continues to be my advice.
My point would be on that, that I think there was one occasion where we tried to do that, and not enough people would commit to have a meeting. And so that torpedoed the idea of doing that.
I, you know, one instance where it was tried and all six council members were there.
No, there were other times where people were talked to, would they attend or whatever? Could we set one up? And there were not enough people to do it.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that situation.
I think Jared is that, that for example, there could be a real disparity. You know, I might be committed to, to spending two Saturday mornings a month in different neighborhoods all over town, but that might not fit the schedule. And so then, if, if, if we took the most conservative approach that you're suggesting, then that severely curtails my ability to talk with my constituents.
No, I'm saying one council member could certainly do that.
But it's a lot. Anyway, at any rate, I think it's, I think it's very cumbersome to try to negotiate getting six or well, seven people, and probably you also, eight people coordinated.
Well, you gotta have somebody recording the meeting.
Somebody recording the meeting. So nine people is not a council group.
So Brian has a.
Do that. So one, one way that you could actually thread this needle is through the use of a subcommittee. And so you could have a subcommittee meet and comply with the open meeting law. And then that takes the heat off of the folks that can't be there. You've got everything noticed up, you're all protected, everything is good at that point.
So, I'm sorry, a subcommittee?
Yeah. So you can create a subcommittee of the city council. And you could even, I mean, you can call it a citizen's subcommittee, and you could have multiple versions of it. And so say for, and I'm just, I'm just reading as they're across my screen here. But say you've got Councilmember Bray, Councilmember Stevens, and Councilmember Cheatham, and they all want to go to the park on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock for a town hall. It could be a citizen's subcommittee. Notice it up is that they're the three folks that are there. It's a town hall. And so it could just, I mean, the minutes don't even have to be all that complex and just say. and just say, we we heard from constituents from 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m., and we will report what we heard back to the city council. And you're, I mean, that threads that needle, and I think it complies with what your city attorney is saying. Hey, I just want to protect you all as you go forward in this. And it gives you a nice clean solution to this that I think checks every one of the boxes that I've heard from you all as far as your concerns.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Linda has a question, and it looked like Claudia had a question. But if you have a comment, Jared, we'll go to you first and then Linda and Buddy.
Thank you, I want to clarify one thing with Brian, just before we get to those questions, it might resolve those. Brian, under the subcommittee concept, if I'm not mistaken, minutes would still be required, all the proper noticing would still be required. I'm curious, an agenda, you know, all those things, it would have to be a quorum of the subcommittee. But the other component that I'm curious about is the municipal preparations law that requires that the mayor preside at all meetings of the council. Do you think that that would be, that we would be able to not have the mayor preside at something like that because it's a subcommittee of the council and not the council itself?
Well, yes, I mean, I think that that's the whole point of a subcommittee, is that you're saying, hey, there's a task that we as a city council think is important and we want to fulfill, but we want to offload part of that task onto a subcommittee and allow them to fulfill that role. And I think that based on what I've heard from you all today, this might be a solution that kind of gets every gets everybody essentially exactly what they're looking for out of this. Does that make sense?
Yes, but it would still require those other minutes, agenda.
And and that's the protection for all the folks that participate, right? You're on the you're in the subcommittee that meets every second Saturday in the park for constituent services. That now you've got an agenda that says, you know, citizen listening session, you know, it checks all those boxes.
And I get.
Linda?
My concern with that is it it kind of goes back to the issue that Heidi raised earlier of how do you determine who gets to be on the subcommittee? I mean, what if you have, you know, what if one group of council members decides to have or establish a subcommittee, and other council members don't get invited or aren't allowed, but they might want to be part of that? You still end up with that perception of, you know, if that subcommittee's meeting in the park, then, you know, three council members are there, but three council members are not there, the mayor's not there. Then some people in the public think, oh, well, they didn't even bother to show up or they don't care enough to come and meet with us. I I think you still have those potential perception problems. So I I'm just curious as to how the subcommittee, you know, makeup would be established or or determined. That is a little bit of a concern. And then I also have another question, but if you want to say something about that first?
Sure, the in a subcommittee is any subset of the whole council, it's any subset. So if you want to have, if you want to have four there, they can do that. If you want to have five there, they can do that. If you want to have everybody there but the mayor, I mean, that those are all subsets within that. And I think that, you know, part of it is that if you want to go this route and and use subcommittees to do this, it probably takes within the council cooperation and communication to say, hey, we're looking at this spot. Who who wants to be part of it? And then kind of move forward from there. You know, and really, it's just a way to kind of protect you all.
Brian, wouldn't you agree there's a perfect solution on this one? Bonnie, that creates the subcommittee, but would still have to be a creation of the full council?
So we would all just stuff that and decide it?
Yeah, I mean, that would be something that comes up in front of the council for your discussion.
So.
Okay, so so did you have a follow-up question?
Well, I had a second question that I wanted to ask.
Okay, why don't you ask it?
Kind of, maybe kind of related, but.
Go ahead and ask it, and then Claudia.
Okay, so this is related to something that I think Roger said earlier about that we tried to have some meetings. There's only one that I know of. I mean, we had the one town hall that went well, and we were going to continue that. But of course, COVID happened, and so we weren't able to schedule more. But there was another one later where, as you call them, the page people, were going to set that up. And I guess my question about that is, because of the law and the need to, you know, have the agenda, have the meeting noticed and everything, when when we set up our meetings, you know, in-house, we check with everybody and make sure it's a time when everyone can go or, you know, we sort of have some control over when it's going to happen and then make sure that it's something that most people can attend, or hopefully all of us can 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 attend. I get a little concerned when it's an outside group that isn't talking with all of us and, you know, and then some of us couldn't make that date, or it was a date that we, you know, maybe have another regular meeting or something like that. So it's not that we don't want to go or don't want to participate or don't want to have meetings with the public. But when we set them up, you know, in-house, through our own, like through the clerk or, you know, somebody in-house, then I think we have better luck making sure that all of us, that it's a date and time that works for everybody. So is there any, you know, I don't know what the answer to that is. And I don't even really know what my question is. But as far as like us setting up our own meetings versus somebody else setting up a meeting, and then they just say, come if you want, don't if you don't, do you have anything to say about that?
So, I mean, that's a tricky area, right? And I mean, I think that that's the core of the dilemma with constituent services. If if you've got a group that's like, hey, we're having a meeting, and we invite all the city council members to come attend it and hear what we have to say, right now, it's it's in your discretion, right? It's not technically a meeting of the city council unless you somehow, there's something that makes it a meeting of the city council, right? I'd liken it to the same issue of, can you go to lunch together? Yes, you can, just make sure you don't talk about stuff that's either on your agenda or about to be on your agenda, that you can see coming up. And so if you've got a constituent group that sends out kind of a a blanket email invite to the whole city council, and it's like, hey, we want to talk to you about the city's parking plan, and you're like, well, that's on our next agenda, you may not be able to go to that event, right? It may be the sort of thing that you have to be really careful with. Or you say, look, that's already on our agenda, why don't you come to us and make your presentation and and invite them to a city council meeting that way? But i- i- and again, it could be the sort of thing where only one of you shows up. That's a possibility. But those are those are areas that are really tricky at times.
Okay, Claudia?
So. So back to this subcommittee. Is this something that can be fluid? Or do we have to establish a specific, you know, these three people, these four people, these, you know, or is it, can it be, is it just called a subcommittee? And then depending on what's going on and who's available, those people are the subcommittee for that particular event?
So I think I I think that it can be somewhat fluid. I think that that's something you probably want to work out within your within your body. How often do you meet? Do you meet every week?
Three Thursdays a month.
Three Thursdays a month, okay. I mean, so it's a fairly regular meeting. And I mean, it could be the sort of thing that, you know, at each of your meetings, maybe you want to say, we're going to establish, you know, this subcommittee or whatever. But it can change, it can be dynamic, I mean, there's.
Okay.
There's lots of options with that, and I think that.
Linda's concern, Linda's concern of people, who's going to decide who the committee is? And and what if somebody doesn't get invited is really a non-issue because it depends on who's available to do whatever we're planning on doing can be part of the subcommittee. Okay, and then and then it, to me, it just seems, if an outside group sends us all an email and invites us to an event that they're having, if two people can't make it or four people can't make it, why can't those individual council members just email the group back and say, I'm sorry, I'm not available? And that way, there's no, there's, you know, I don't understand what the concern is with people thinking they didn't bother to show up. You just send an email and say, I have a I have a prior commitment.
You send that to them, but the public doesn't see that. They don't know, I mean, we did send emails, but the public doesn't know that. Nobody tells them.
But that's always true, that's true of a chamber meeting, that's true.
That's true of, yeah, of any.
ribbon cutting, it's true.
Right, but if you're talking, if you're setting this up as a town hall type meeting with the whole council, that's not the same situation as going to a chamber ribbon cutting. That is sort of whoever can come. But if you're saying this is a council town hall, but half the council and the mayor aren't there, the 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 public expects all of you would be there.
But you can't dictate to somebody, you can't say to a community group, I'm sorry, this is how we we the council are telling you how you have to run your group. I mean, that's up to them, right, Brian? I mean, we don't have any capacity to say to the John Birch Society, no, I'm sorry, you can't have a meeting on that day at that time because some of us can't make it.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of that, I mean, that's the tricky part of constituent services, right? You you have to make an evaluation of which groups you want to be in front of, which groups are your priority. And then and you have to also do it with the understanding, you can't be everyone and everywhere all at the same time. It's it's physically impossible. And I think that the public generally understands that there's a lot of pressures placed on everyone in government's calendar. And so you you're not going to be 100% at events. And I know that politicians in particular, you know, I've worked with the legislature a lot. There's a reception almost every single night of the legislative session, and they don't go to them all, right? They've got certain groups and constituencies that they're like, yep, I'm 100% going to be at that one. And then they've got a group that they're like, if I can make it, I'll make it. And then they've probably got a group of them that they're like, yeah, I'm probably going to skip this one. And I think that that's part of your evaluation of your own kind of, you know, political and constituent needs.
So I have I have I have the follow-up question to the subcommittee thing. So we have to have an agenda, so a subcommittee has a an event, an interactive event with the public. So the agenda can be something as simple as, we just want to hear from you? Or does it have to be very specific?
It can be, so under the law, the agenda is required to have all probable items of discussion. And if you're going to have a citizens' town hall, it can be, you can have an agenda item that says, take public testimony on a variety of topics.
Okay, and then.
Covers it, because you don't know what they're going to get up in front of you and talk about. And then you can also have an agenda that's more specific, that's like, we're going to discuss the parking situation at Fifth and Vine.
Right.
Right, it's all up to you. But all the all the law says is probable items of discussion. And I can tell you, we get into lots of discussions about whether it's specific or not, but the law just doesn't help us out there. And so the good news for you is you've got the room you need.
Okay, and then with regard to minutes, do we have to have our clerk at these events to take our minutes? Or can whoever, one of the one of us who's there take the minutes or?
So as a subcommittee, you can probably have one of you take the minutes. And again, the minutes can be as simple as the council, the subcommittee, met and heard from constituents from, you know, 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on a variety of topics related to city business.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, Linda, Heidi, and I think I saw Chris.
I just wanted to clarify, to go back to what we were talking about earlier. My questions and and concerns are regarding specifically the the situation where we're talking about a town hall and presenting it as a council meeting of sorts, you know, a town hall. I'm not saying that, you know, I mean, of course, groups, citizen groups out in the community can meet whenever they want and talk about whatever they want to talk about. And of course, we don't dictate to them when they can meet and what they can talk about. What I'm talking about is when when they're inviting us, and by us, I mean all of us, and and creating a town hall type of meeting that is presented as, you know, we're going to be meeting with the city council. That's, I just want to clarify, that's the situation that I'm talking about, not just, you know, one or two of us go and meet with a a group of people that we know or or that we're trying to dictate when groups can have their meetings. I even when I was talking about scheduling the council to be there and checking that we can all be there, I'm talking about when we're having a town hall council meeting. I just want to be clear.
Okay, Heidi?
Yeah, just the concept of a subcommittee is something I had not heard before, so I just wanted a little more clarification on that. If the council were to create a subcommittee, for example, that were to be in charge of setting up town hall meetings, and maybe all six council members wanted to and could attend, but we had a secret desire for the mayor to not attend, not saying that's the case. But but if we did, and we said, we want him there, we don't like the way he conducts meetings, you know, we're trying to keep him out of our meeting, how how does that work? I'm just trying to understand. To me, that doesn't seem like that would be a good idea if, you know, if it's a publicly noticed meeting. Of course, he would have the right to show up if he's available, and of course, if he's out of town, then so be it. But how would we address any concerns that might come up that way? You know, or if there were one council member, like, for example, if, and I'm not saying this is the case because I do not think Linda's annoying, but what if I were to say, I think Linda's super annoying, and I want to have a council meeting with everybody else, but I just don't want her, so let's make sure we schedule it at a time that we know she'll never be available? Like that, how do we address any situation like that were to arise?
Yeah, so being being in a profession where sometimes folks want to carve us out of meetings because nothing wrecks a good idea like legal, I completely, I completely understand where you're where you're coming from. But I got to be honest, I mean, that's more of kind of a political and almost an organizational trust sort of question for you all to kind of work through. I mean, that's a, those are really political sorts of events. I mean, my my thinking would be that if you created a subcommittee, that the whole point of the subcommittee is that you're doing it so that the folks that want to be there can be there, and the folks that can't make it essentially don't have to be there, right? Because it's not a evaluative point of, oh, you're skipping city council meetings. No, this is, we are the folks that have the time and the and the availability at this point, and we're going to do it. And then the folks that can't make it are like, you know what, I can't make this one, but maybe the one on Tuesday night I can make. And so I feel like this is one of those things where kind of it it relies on communication, cooperation, and trust among all of you as board members, if that makes sense.
Okay, Chris, and then Claudia, and then Roger.
Yeah, I'm curious, how how do you differentiate? For example, if if three council members are running for reelection and they're having a campaign meeting at which all three of them are present, how or does that meeting? How do you, how does that, and where's the line there? Do you understand what I'm what I'm, I mean.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think it goes back to, right, it's not illegal for you to have the meeting. It, it, and it, it doesn't become a violation of the open meeting law until that quorum is triggered and the topic is a topic of business in front of the city in some capacity. Either you've got a decision or you're on the road to a decision. And so again, you know, going back to just the three people, you can do it. You just have to be very careful. Same thing in that campaign setting. The, the, the challenge that you've got within a campaign setting is it's more likely, based on your campaigning, that you may be discussing things that are either in front of the city council or very close to being in front of the city council, which then raises that risk factor if you then go out and chat, for example, with one other council member. But again, it, it's permissible under the open meeting law. You just have to be very careful with those circumstances that surround it.
Okay, Claudia.
So can I break down the subcommittee thing Barney style? Because I'm not that bright. If we decide, for example, that we want to start having meetings with constituents and we want to do it, you know, once a month, right? So we, we're like, okay, let's, let's do it on Friday. And everybody can make it that Friday. So then it becomes a, 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 a city council town hall because we can all be there. But if we can't all be there on a given day, then the people who can be there make up that subcommittee for that event. But on any other given day, it might be a different group of people. Am I, am I correct there? There, it doesn't have to be a fixed group of people, right?
So my recommendation would be that, and I'm assuming you don't just, you know, the day before say, hey, let's show up at the park. Like, these are kind of planned and thought out. Is that, is that accurate?
Right.
Yeah. And if you're meeting three times a month, you should have the ability to kind of get that plan in place. And so you could have a line item on your regular meeting agenda that says, you know, citizens' subcommittee meeting, I, I, I don't know, Idaho State University campus, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, right? In the student union or something like that. And then you'd have, and, and even in the meeting, you could set the subcommittee, right? You could say, oh, council member Bray can make it, council member Stevens can't, council member Cheatham can make it, council member Claudia cannot, council member Levruck cannot make it, and council member Adamson can't make it. That's our subcommittee.
Right, okay.
And I think it can be that kind of straightforward. And, and that accomplishes a couple of things for you, right? Because it allows for that kind of fluidity that it sounds like you're looking for. But it also allows for public notice and it's all done above board and everybody's aware, which I think, you know, appropriately checks your city attorney's boxes. Is that, is that?
Because to me, the, I, I, and I had not even heard of such a thing as the, as the subcommittee. But for me, it's not about excluding any members of the council. It's about giving freedom to members of the council to talk with people and meet with people without having to make sure that all seven of us can be present. So, thank you. Okay.
One of the things we keep in mind is it also protects you in case you do have where four people want to show up or five people show up. And that's the key is it protects you in those circumstances. And so it won't be an absolute necessity for onesies, twosies, or threesies. The question mark is that fourth council member or that fourth conversation that occurs. That's what we're looking to protect at this point, is your ability to, to act within that space.
Gotcha.
And then just one clarification on that. Let me know if you disagree, Brian, that that, that fluidity is, is appropriate, but it has to be appropriate based on the decision of the full council as to who makes up that subcommittee for each subcommittee meeting. It can't just be whoever happens to show up for the subcommittee meeting becomes the subcommittee. Would you agree?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that, that clarification. What I'm saying is, you would have it all planned out. And that, it would just be a motion, right? I move that we appoint this subcommittee for the Tuesday citizens' meeting at Idaho State University.
So, so a clarification on my part then, do we need to put that on an agenda as an action item?
Yes.
So we'll need to know when these are going to happen so we have the opportunity to put them on an agenda that will be published a week ahead of time to start with. And so as you, as, as you look at those things, you would have to have it, what, a week and a half really ahead of time so that it can get on an agenda, so it gets published and it sits out there in the public for a week before we make the decision.
Okay. If you'd have to have agenda time for the meeting where you're going to develop the subcommittee, and then agenda or noticing time after that to actually notice up the subcommittee meeting, once it's been established at that first meeting. It's still very, part of a very specific process of the open meeting law.
Right.
And be done, but very.
But if, but say we, we, we talk about a date a month from now.
Sure.
That's more than enough time.
Oh, yeah.
The issue would be, we're talking about a date next Tuesday.
No, but I, but I mean, I.
Well, I'm not saying, you say no, but that could happen.
Well.
We want a subcommittee next Tuesday where we don't have it on the agenda. We don't have time to notice. We don't have time to do the thing. So at that point, we would have to say, no, we can't do that.
Right.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you could, I mean, depending on the circumstances, you can always amend your agenda and add an item to it. And so for example, let's, and I'm just using a hypothetical here, but let's say you had some sort of hot issue that just kind of flared up in the city of Pocatello. And folks were like, hey, we want to talk about this. And you said, you know what? It's worthy. We want to have this discussion. I would, I would ask that we put this on the agenda because it just came up. That may be a way for you to do that. You've always got that capability to amend it and place it on there, which is subject to a vote of the council, right? Again, you've got a process under the open meeting law for how that can occur.
So, but I, I just want some clarification on that. I understand that we have that. That's more of an emergency type of a thing instead of an every week, we're going to throw something out there.
Yes, yeah. Every week, then you got to, I, I would recommend relooking at your process.
Okay, all right. Roger, you had a question.
Okay. There are topics that come up before the council with regularity. How sacrosanct is it to stay away from those when we're talking to the public? For example, budget and taxes are always going to be something that come up. How, how far do we have to stay away from that? We can talk about our theory or something like that, but we can't say, this is what I want. I'm going to make a motion to be in the budget. Is that when we're talking with the public?
So, Councilmember Bray, by noticing these up as a subcommittee meeting, it actually enables you to have that discussion.
No, no, I'm not. I'm saying just in general.
Oh, if you're out talking to the public and you're like, hey, I agree with you, taxes are too high, I'm going to bring a motion, and it's just you?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no problem with that. That's good old fashioned politicking.
Okay, and the other part of that is.
You elected the office.
What if there are three of us there?
So again, you want to be really careful in that situation, right? Because three of you may be okay, but if just one of you talks to one other person, that triggers an issue. The other thing, the other thing that you always want to make sure of is the open meeting law is designed for the public to see decisions being made in a transparent fashion. And so if you've got like a group of three that it looks like they're coming to their conclusion together in some out of meeting setting, that creates questions. That's going to cause the public to say, hey, wait a minute, what's going on here? And you really want to avoid situations where the public can take away from this that there's no debate because the decisions are pre-made. And I, I would really strongly caution you against putting yourself in any of that sort of circumstance.
So we can talk in generalities about things that regularly come before. Another issue would be signs. We have sign ordinances coming up all the time. And we have applications for exceptions all the time. So we can talk in generalities without being specific to a sign at a place or, or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's, again, you just want to be careful, right? Because you start out in generalities, but the, I've had enough constituent interactions to know that even the general discussions can sometimes take a turn to the specific pretty quick, particularly if you've got a persistent constituent.
So, but Brian, that is also, any individual council member can have that discussion with somebody. But when you get a group of, of council members, say you get three of them sitting there talking to the, a person or two, that's when you really start getting, have to be really careful. And because you say that at the wrong time before a meeting to another council member, you're now, you've created a quasi-meeting and so what is called?
Serial meeting.
A serial meeting, thank you.
Right, serial meeting.
Yeah, which creates another problem. Is that correct? I mean, individually, I think you could talk about anything to any constituents. But when you start getting a group, that's when the issue happens.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think that that's 100% accurate. I liken it to, if you're in a group and you're having these type of conversations, it would be the equivalent of you driving down the street and hitting yellow lights every single time, right? If you're hitting yellow lights, you know, whoa, this is, you probably start getting nervous if that's all you're hitting. Like, whoa, I need to slow down a little and maybe time it so that it's not so close. And I think that that's a good way to think about. Or maybe you want to floor it and be like, let's turn some of these yellow green, right? But, but you want to be careful in that scenario. And I think that, that you've raised a good, good, good example of that.
Okay, Roger and then Chris.
Three council members being in one place together does not constitute a violation of open meeting law, right? Something, something has to be proven in terms of the decision being rendered or something like that before there's any question of it being a violation.
Yeah, it's got, it's got, remember, you're completely allowed to socially engage with one another. You can have lunch, all of those things. And you can even talk to one another. The key is you don't want to create a quorum and you don't want to create a scenario where people think that you're pre-deciding issues.
So when, when three of us met to process the election results and somebody called in and said we were violating open meeting law when all we were talking about was election results, that wasn't a violation, was it?
It doesn't sound like it. I mean, I would need to, I would probably need to know more, but just based on what you've told me, I mean, that sounds.
That's all we were doing, talking about.
I think we were debriefing after the.
We were debriefing. So it wasn't election, it was town hall.
Yeah, we, we had a town hall, all of us, and then us three met.
It wasn't election.
No, it wasn't. It was a town hall. What's so funny, Brian?
So, so there was a question, and I don't even think you're aware of that. I don't think it ever arose to, to your level, Brian. But there was a question, we had a citizen, three members met together, and they were cautioned that they should be careful doing that. And the three members that met are, were worried about, well, that's not a town hall meeting and stuff like that. That never arose to your, to your level anyway. And so, so you wouldn't know what they're, what he's really, what he's doing, I believe.
I think the question is.
The question is clarifying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When does it get to that level and when does somebody get there?
So I, I think that, I think you've answered that question. The clarifying thing is the perception. Somebody in the community had a perception of three council meeting members meeting. They had no idea what they were meeting for. They had the, the perception that they were meeting to make a decision of some sort. And that is what you've, I mean, you started the meeting today cautioning the council to, a perception, in fact, I think I wrote it down. There's the two things that you said you need to be careful of, of...
Decisions and deliberations.
Well, no, but it was the perception.
But I, I think there's a distinction, if, if, if I'm correct, there's a distinction between what's legal and what is, what, what, and perception. So basically, three council members do not constitute a quorum. Therefore, you can't, and, and if, unless it's been rendered as a subcommittee by the entire council, three council members can meet together and legally, there is not a problem. I mean, they, they could be discussing, you know, what, what they think the new sign ordinance ought to be. And their perception is one thing, legality is another. Legally, they have done nothing incorrect. Am I misunderstanding?
No, that's, I mean, that's generally, you know, you have to be, as I said, you have to be really careful in that situation because, you know, you want to avoid, number one, if you talk to one other council member, that could taint the decision. And then you've also got that perceptive element. And I think the other thing you want to be aware of is the public, the public doesn't engage in the nuances of the open meeting law at the level that we're engaging in them today. And so if the public sees three of you sitting down in the local cafe talking about the sign ordinance, they're going to think it's an open meeting law violation. And it's going to be really hard to convince them otherwise. And I think that that's something that I can't, I can't stress that enough, is that, and, and, you know, just because legally I can say you're okay under the open meeting law, doesn't mean that opinion's going to carry through in the court of public opinion. And I think that that's part of what's wrapped up in this discussion, is understanding your constituents don't necessarily appreciate the nuances that we appreciate.
But shouldn't part of that clarification be that we make it clear that three councils can, council members can legally be together? And unless there is a quorum, there, there is no violation.
It's not a meeting.
There's no, unless you establish a quorum in some way, there is not been an open meeting law violation.
And unless they're not discussing business to, you got to make that clear.
Talking shop, if we're going to.
No, I've heard him say that you can sit together and talk about a sign ordinance as three council members. But unless you get to a fourth person with what you're discussing, you have not become a, an open meeting law violation.
And I would add to that, that just because you can do it, doesn't mean it's right to do it.
But, yeah, but perception is how you clarify.
And, and I'll be honest with you, I've seen folks, you know, we, we had a situation a few years ago where there was a group that used to get together for breakfast before their county commissioner meeting. And they didn't, they never talked shop. But just the fact that the public saw them getting together to have breakfast before the county commissioner meeting was enough for them to say, nope, that's not the way we do business here. And, and, and so I want to impress upon you that just because you can find a legally correct answer here, it doesn't mean that's going to carry the day.
Yeah, but.
There's, there's a problem this to the public.
What I'm saying is the public needs to have clarity about what constitutes a violation. And to say that when two council members are together is a violation, or to when, say, three council members are together, that's an assumption. That the best it can be is an assumption. It cannot be legally clarified as a violation.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yeah. The dilemma that you've got there is the public can see the three council members, but they don't see your interaction with your fellow council members. And so there's always a pause point there.
I understand all that, but I'm still saying, the law specifically says it's only when you get to a fourth council member to a quorum that you have a violation, right?
Right, it's a quorum, yeah, quorum and the topics of discussion.
So Jared and then Heidi.
I do, I do want to add one thing to that. And that's one of the things you started with today, Brian, is the letter of the law and the spirit of the law, correct? And then also with my capacity as an organizational attorney, I represent the organization, not the people in it. I have a duty to represent them on the legalities of the organization as well as the policies of the organization. And so I want to make clear to the council that that's why my advice has always been that even less than a form should not. that even less than a forum should not convene and discuss pending items of the council, because I feel like based on the spirit of the law, based on the openness that we are striving for, and based on the policies that I have to advise as well as the law, that's been my advice. And so I, I want to make that clear to the council. I understand where Brian's coming from, I can read the words, I can put the words together, and I know exactly where that bright line is in this particular law, there is some bright lines, but there's also some very gray lines. And so that's where maybe I'm even more conservative than Brian, and that's why I'm more conservative than Brian. So I just wanted to be clear on that point as well.
But I, I think it's valid to say that this group has cast aspersions based on assumptions rather than law.
Well, you also remember Brian mentioned that even if you're in complete compliance, if you're running those yellow lights, you're going to, his, his words were, it will lead to inevitable open meeting law complaints, not that it's a violation, but it will lead to inevitable complaints.
I'm talking about this group.
Well, but I'm talking about the bigger picture as well and the complaints that have come in. Their complaints, they haven't gone anywhere, they certainly have made it to the Attorney General's office that I'm aware of, but that's going to happen in the course of your cliff edge that you are.
Hey, Heidi.
Well, I'm sorry, I just had a question based on something that just was said a second ago, and I'm just hoping somebody can clarify for me because I guess I'm not aware of the situation. So I don't know anything about supposed citizen reports of violations or any details about that, but I guess earlier you said when we had our actual official town hall in which all six members and the mayor were present and it was publicly noticed and took meetings, that there was another town hall meeting after that?
No, the next day, Roger, Chris and I got together so that we could compare our takeaways from the town hall that we were all at.
The town hall was just...
No, 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 it was just us, but somebody, somebody called and, and complained that that was a violation of the open meeting law.
And it was, and this is where I say it was election process, because we'd all promised that we would meet, that we would have dialogue with the citizens, and we were talking about how well that dialogue went. And that, all we were doing was unpacking.
So I think, though, at the end of the day, the perception, just to your point, Brian, is the perception of that was the citizens saw that, the perception, though maybe we can walk that gray line of we three can meet, the perception was definitely violated because we had citizens call and say, I've seen those three meeting together, they're making decisions, they're this or that, which has obviously created some concern with at least Council Member Bray about making sure that it's legal to do that. The perception is the thing that's in question in my mind. Is that, I mean, is that fair?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like to me, and I guess if, if I could add one layer to that, Mayor, it's to always remember that the citizens are watching this stuff. I mean, they're, they're a lot savvier than I think sometimes folks give them credit for, and, and I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, I know you've been there for a while, and Jared, you've been in your role for a while, the action items part of agendas is new, right? That's newer provision, and that came about because of citizens were concerned with the way that local governments were doing business and they thought they were getting sandbagged on agenda items. If there becomes a perception that there are like voting blocks and groups that are trying to avoid the open meeting law, right, the protection that you've got on the quorum, that can disappear. And I, I, I always put that out there because I want you to know that just because maybe it's going okay in Pocatello and things are okay, it may not be going okay in Twin Falls or Idaho Falls or, or Hagerman. And I think that that's something to always kind of keep in the back of your mind, is it's not just about are we complying strictly with the letter of the law, it's are we complying in a way that citizens have confidence in the way that we as government make decisions? And so, a- as I said before, right, legally you probably can do it, but perceptually you have to be exceptionally careful, and you have to be really careful with the trust of the public.
Sure. Chris, I think you had a question.
Yeah, I want to, I think that Horace has given up the ghost. So I, I would like to go back, if I could, to the subcommittee notion, I have two questions. One, if a, I understand that the entire council has to essentially vote on creating a, a subcommittee, and so if a notion is brought forward, a notion, not a motion, is brought forward where, you know, four council members, two council members, whatever, want to have a series of town halls, and it's brought forward as we want to have, I mean, community conversations or, you know, talks in the park or whatever, and here are the dates, and here are the times, number one, do they have to be noticed individually? And number two, can the initiative to create a subcommittee, which then whoever else wants to be part of it, fine, can that initiative come from a subgroup of council members? And then that would obviously have to be brought to the council, but is it only the council can, that can initiate the potential for a subcommittee, or can a subgroup of council members initiate the potential for a subcommittee, what, what we now are calling a subcommittee?
Right, the, so, so there's, there's actually several questions in there, and I'm going to try to, to break them all down. First of all, the authority of the city is through the city council and the mayor, and so if you're going to create those subgroups, it does have to come from the authority within the city, which is the city council and the mayor. So that's, I think that's, now, you asked if you set up, you say you said, you know, for the next five Tuesdays, we're going to have a town hall in the park. You could set up a, a schedule under the open meeting law, you can have a single notice that says each Tuesday in June, we're going to have a meeting, and that suffices as notice of the meeting, but you would still have to comply with the 48-hour agenda notice of each of those events. And then it maybe it wasn't as frequent, you might, i- if it's a little less scheduled than that, you may want to think about individually noticed events. Again, it's going to kind of depend, and, and I got to be honest with you, I've got a ton of confidence in your city attorney and his ability to kind of, to get you through those sorts of issues.
But, but that's, but the question, okay, a subgroup of council members are, are interested in doing this, you know, if other people want to be part of it, great, fine, whatever, but that, I mean, I suppose it would be a motion can be initiated from the interested council members, it, it doesn't have to be, I mean, just like anything else, it can be brought forward to the council, correct?
Yeah, whatever your process is for getting an item on the agenda, that's how you would...
Yeah, the mayor has, has pretty much total control of that. So, but what I think I'm hearing is that there's nothing that precludes a, a portion of the council saying, hey, we want to do, we want to do community conversations for the following five Tuesday evenings, we're bringing that to the council as a motion, the rise or fall on a vote.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's not an open meeting law question, that's more of a how your city does business question, and I'll refer to Jared on that one.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't that the entire council had to say, okay, let's create a subcommittee that the, that the people interested in having a subcommittee created can initiate that energy.
And I'll go ahead and answer that, Brian, like I said, I believe, I agree, that's more of a process question, and it's like any other thing that you would like to drop to an agenda, you address that, doesn't have to be a group of council members, it can be a council member, address that with the mayor, it goes on the agenda, and then it would take a motion and a majority vote of the council to create that subcommittee.
Okay, and so, Mr. Mayor, if that were brought to you, would it, could it get on an agenda in a timely manner?
Absolutely. It's, it, there's a deadline for the, for the agenda, so that we're not, don't have the perception of just throwing things on at the agenda at the last minute because that's what we want to talk about. So we have an agenda, as I, if you asked me about it today for tonight's meeting, I would say, no, we're not going to mess with that. If you were asked to say, look, on May 6, or whatever the first meeting in May is, we would like that, by all means, of course. It would absolutely be on the agenda.
Okay, can I just clarify?
I kind of have a clarifying question too, but go ahead.
Maybe we have the same question. I'm not understanding the distinction that you're making there. A subgroup can bring it to the mayor and get it on an agenda, or one person can bring it to, but, but we're all still making the decision ultimately, is that correct? Because what Brian, Attorney Kane has said is that the only way a subcommittee of the council can be created ever is through a decision by the council. So my question was really about where can that notion, that, that initiating energy, can it come from, you know, the, the mayor and council down? Can it also come from a portion of council members up? And the answer is both.
Well, in my understanding, I guess I, I would say anything can come from anywhere at any time, so I, I don't see that as a concern, but, you know, I just want to make sure that we are all still making this decision as a council.
And that's exactly what it is. I, I think that's, the question is, is can, can, Chris is asking, can I ask the mayor to put this on?
Right.
Or can three of us come to the mayor and say, can we put it on? And the answer to that is yes. At the end of the day, the entire council has to vote on a subcommittee and, and move from that, from there, a, a subcommittee to represent the council. Is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that...
Jared, I guess maybe Jared's...
Jared said, actually, I don't know that I said that, I think that's how Jared put it.
Yeah, I, I think that that would be our, following our typical process, we're getting something on the agenda before the whole council, and then when the council decides as a majority, then, then that's what we work off of.
That's what we do. Okay. All right, super. Any other questions? Jared, do you have any comments?
You know, I'm, I'm looking through some of these, the, the rest of these summary of questions which Brian Kane responded, and, and there's really just variations of what we've already talked about. So I, I don't feel like there's any reason to really go through those, of course, that's not my call, Mayor, that's yours, but, but I think we've covered the things that I was hoping would be covered today, and, and I'm really thankful for Brian for, for taking the time to, to visit with us today. I, I don't have anything else, Mayor.
Since I'm looking at these, there's a, a question number six, can three council members offer a citizen town hall opportunity and be okay? I guess the real answer to that is not just a flat simple yes, the answer is the council can dictate a, a committee to, to offer that town hall meeting.
No, three council, three council members can meet because it's not a quorum, that providing they don't initiate a conversation that results in a serial quorum legally, and then separately is the entire perceptual issue.
But also not representing it as a city council town hall.
Well, no, I mean, I, you know, that's, of course not.
Main point there, though, is that if it's going to be represented as a city council town hall or a conversation or whatever, that we...
Of course.
That it is all of us.
Of course.
So is that correct then, Brian? I mean, are we understanding that correctly?
Yeah, it sounds like you have it.
Okay. Because I'm still a little bit confused, but our attorney will be able to direct us and clear that up for us.
The, the fact of the matter is there is some gray areas in it, there, there is some specific language about it has to be a meeting in order to be a violation of the open meeting law, and in order for it to be a meeting, it has to have a quorum. But then there are all the other risk factors that we've been talking about for the last several minutes, including the, the perception, including the spirit of the law, including the effort towards transparency. And I would refer the Councilman Brian to a, a portion of the Attorney General's manual that says that the requirement that the open meeting law be complied with whenever a forum of a governing body needs to deliberate or to make a decision should not be evaded by holding smaller meetings with less than a quorum. And so I think there's very real complaints that will, would come out of regular, less than a quorum council meetings unless it was a subcommittee, which would be a full separate discussion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which is very different from taking input from the public.
Heidi?
I'm not trying to be difficult, I just wanted to state that I would love to engage with citizens and I would love to participate in any community conversations or town halls, and so I would, I would always be invited to them. That's all I'm saying.
I would say ditto.
So, so that's a whole other thing, we're, we're taking quite a bit of time of Brian's time here, so, okay. Brian, thank you very much for your time, you're, you're with us. Is there anything that we need to do or worry about that you can think of in the top of your head right now?
No, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I, the one thing that I would just leave you with is the, the kind of constant reminder that government is a customer service endeavor, and if we lose the confidence of our customers, which is something I think that our nation is dealing with right now, I take it as a serious obligation of all of us within government, and so whatever decisions you make on any of these issues, please have that confidence in government, in that customer service element at the forefront. And also, if, if there's like follow-up or anything that needs to occur, please feel free to reach back out. And again, I think you guys have excellent counsel on these issues, and I would strongly encourage you to rely heavily on that counsel. I will tell you that having been an attorney for the legislature for many years, I know that part of my job is to get blamed for the ideas they want to do but can't quite get done, and, and I accept that. I mean, that's what I went to law school for and why I took the oath that I did to serve the state of Idaho, but I think that, that Jared is just as solemn in his discharge of duties for you all at the city of Pocatello, and, and he knows how to get a hold of me, and he's discussed these issues with me. So just know that you've got a great resource there, and if he ever needs it, he's got plenty of resources available to him as well. So thank you.
Super. Thank you then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What?
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you said something.
No, I said thank you.
Oh. Thought I came from... Thank you very much, Brian. With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.